All right.
No, I did, yes.
Thank you all for being here. Just a very brief overview.
Use the microphone, Nate.
So, a brief.
Yeah, that one close.
A brief overview of what we're doing tonight. This is a presentation that is being funded through the Education Outreach Program, which is a TGM program funded by a joint project with ODOT and our DLCD staff. We have representatives here from them. Instead of taking time to go through all of that, we are just going to jump in. Our consultant is OTAC, and don't ask me what the acronyms actually stands for. It's a name. So, it's just OTAC. And so Glenn Bolin is our staff person, and he will be basically walking us through the report. Now, what we have here, this is not action item tonight. You will not see this being adopted by the city council. This is presenting the information that they have done, a comparison of three different projects that were done to expand the UGB, and how these communities approached it and what they ended up doing. As far as, so, we're going to take it a section at a time, and I think Glenn is going to ask, as we go through each section, if you have concerns or questions, then by all means, please make those known, because this is the draft report, and based on the input that we have tonight, then the report will be finalized from the input that you give. So by all means, and we're going to do this fairly informally, I will walk around with the microphone. So raise your hand if you have a question when, at the appropriate time when Glenn gives you the cue.
Or I can repeat the question, too. See if that reaches.
It should reach.
Okay.
I think we got a long cord.
All right.
So with that, I'll give this to Glenn.
That microphone works much better.
Yes. Testing, okay. OTAC is the last names of four people, who's, who I can't remember. Only a few of them, Osmud, Tehran, anyway. But they're not with the company anymore, but the name state. So, as Nate said, there's, somebody may have seen off the packet online, there's this report, and there's a kind of a nice little one-page summary in the back that'll kind of give you the main pieces. And again, this is research that we did.
If anybody needs that one pager, I can get you.
All right. So, okay, so without further ado, so what I've got here is I've got these, you know, five trends, five kind of stopping points. So I'm going to go through the outline of the report, talk about the research we've found, or research that we did, and the conclusions we've got, and then we can stop and have discussion questions. If there's a, if there's something confusing on the slide, just put your hand up. Don't, we don't need to wait if we can't read something, or because some of the things are kind of small, and some of the stuff is kind of wonky, so. All right, so just a little bit of background, we, we, we were here in August, was it? Or June? June, in June, with our work session. And I've got some of the slides here, just as a refresher, things that we looked at before. But basically, the city had done research in 2013 that showed there was demand, meaning there was projected housing, projected jobs, that would use up the existing land in the city, and then having, you know, potentially could use about 300 or so more acres beyond the city, the city's current UGB. And, as you know, there's not a whole lot of vacant land within the city. It's highlighted on that map behind me. The yellow stuff is purely vacant, which is kind of few and far between, but there's a fair bit of stuff that's partially vacant, and then there's more with redevelopment opportunities. Most of the city, so these, these are land use planning colors, the lighter the yellow, the single-family, when you get into the purples and the reds, it's commercial, oranges are multifamily, it's kind of a standard kind of rainbow that we use. But you can see from this map that most of the city is zoned for single-family homes, not a big surprise. The central area, Cherry, and River Road and Cherry, there, you have some mixed-use and commercial zone that's much more intense. So this question of, you know, how does the city grow? Redevelopment, for example, is going to be in that commercial core area, where it's going to be more multifamily and mixed-use. Not a lot of redevelopment can happen in single-family neighborhoods, because even if you did, tear a house down, you put a new house in its place, or maybe two in its places, you don't get a whole lot of new units. We talked, at our last meeting, we had a lot of questions. We talked about, what's the process for the urban growth boundary? We talked about the fact that Kaiser is a unique situation, and that's a shared boundary with Kaiser, so Salem-Kaiser urban growth boundary. We also talked about, and we go some more into this, but when you expand an urban growth boundary, the process to do that, which is looking at your supply, looking at your demand, looking at the lands around you for suitability. We also talked about the costs related to system charges, SDCs or system development charges. If you go to build, get a building permit to build a house, you pay some money beyond just a permit fee, but pay money toward the infrastructure, the water, the sewer, for example, for that. Some things are funded through general funds, and obviously, SDCs would affect home price, general fund not so much, unless taxation is kind of mixed into there. And we also talked a little bit last time about community character, the trends, I think one of the things we identified was trends of commuters having to live farther away, whether they are people living in canyon cities, driving to Kaiser-Salem, or they're people in Twalleton, Wilsonville, working there, living in Kaiser for a price benefit. So there's some of the things that we talked about before. As I mentioned, there's this process that we all follow. This is a simplified version, there's all kinds of legal code and whatnot, but basically, like I said, is you've, that 2013 study can come up with a demand, and then we look at what's on the ground, what our land supply is, compare the two, obviously tells us if we have a deficit. We then say, are there things that we can do to make up that deficit? And if not, then we start looking for lands outside of an urban growth boundary. That's kind of the progression here. Talking about this issue of the shared UGB, it's, it came to the conclusion last time, we verified with research, that it's really not feasible for Kaiser to expand its urban growth boundary while it is sharing a boundary with Salem. And there's a few reasons for that. The first one is Salem has more capacity within their boundary, based on comments from their planners, they have enough room to handle the regional forecast with, within vacant, redevelopable land. They also have land outside their city that's inside of UGB that they can annex. And then lastly, and this is the tougher one, when you go to annex, there's a strong priority over using what we call exception land, it's a really wonky term. It really means it's not designated for farm or forest use, it's been accepted from that state requirement. And in real terms, that means it's small hobby farms, it's nice rural homes, it's things of that nature that are on these exception lands. Actually, a lot of vineyards are on exception lands, too. So there's, there's a, around Salem, there are some scattered areas that are that exception land. There's only a small bit up here on the Creek, Lake, yeah. This is the one slide that has way too many words. I try to not make wordy slides, and this is as short as I can make this one. So it's in detail in the report, but, so, this is, we talked last time, people asked for what is the process to separate from Salem and expand the boundary? DLCD is doing research on this, because it's, there's a lot of legal information to figure out, and so there's a white paper coming, but I have, through discussions with them and other research, distilled down kind of these main bullet points. In 2021, Portland State University's forecast group is doing a new forecast that will be just isolated to Kaiser's boundary, so there won't be the estimation and whatnot. So at that point, you have data that you can use to update that, remember that little flow chart I wrote? Update your housing needs, your employment opportunity, economic opportunities, and the build-able lands inventory. In all likelihood, there's obviously less inventory in 2021 than there is today. And then, this is kind of tricky, you have to, the way it works in, we look at, how does that future jive with our comp plan? So we have to document why, you know, in the case of being in need, that's, the comp plan's economic needs aren't going to be met, or the housing needs aren't going to be met. There's also policies in Kaiser's comp plan about supporting the shared UGB that would have to be changed and discussed as well. Then there's a process, SCAPAC. This is the Salem-Kaiser Area Planning Advisory Committee. And it's not a standing committee per se, but this is, is in the city's comprehensive plan, and it's in Kaiser, Salem's comp plan, Marion County, and Polk County, that is, that's a process for how that separation occurs without having to go to the state legislature. It's basically unanimous agreement. You start with a staff working group, receives a proposal from Kaiser, and they've got a certain amount of time to come to an agreement. If they don't, then it goes on to elected officials, so all the elected officials are invited. And then again, they, they could achieve unanimous agreement on the proposal, and they can then make a recommendation for the proposal to go forward, at which point the city can move forward. If not, then the city would have to work out something in the legislature, which has been done before. Various forms with Springfield Eugene split with the legislature, and legislature also finished up a series of urban growth boundary adjustments in the Portland metropolitan area that were subject to all kinds of appeals, and so they just, they closed it down, and they did a grand bargain, was called, grand bargain. So then, once you've got the UGB separated, then, then you can go ahead, and you can use that process, I found, to then declare why and where you need, you want to grow, do the locational analysis that we talked about with the firm, and it's exception land. And then, you know, submit your findings, once you're through there, you develop a master plan, which is figure out what the land uses are going to be, what the transportation's going to be, the sewer and water, how that's going to get handled, and then, once you've done all that, then you can annex those properties. So once you get your comp plan amended, people can, either the city can, what we call legislatively annex, and say, we're going to annex this area, we're going to propose it for annexation, or individual property owners can petition for annexation, and it happens both ways. It's, so oftentimes, when a person develops, they will then petition for annexation, petition for the zone change, and then gone for building permits. So that's why I said that next step was annex, zone, new lands, and permit development. So, that's really wonky. Any questions on that? Okay.
So, what if they go straight to legislative?
Then you skip the, you skip the SCAPAC process.
Right.
Yeah.
So if you've got legislators that provide a bill saying, here we go, we can just get this done?
Yeah, if you, I mean, yeah, so, so legislature's basically the comp plan for all the rural lands, I'm sorry, the planning commission for all the rural lands in the state. So the legislature could move the urban growth boundary even.
So for the people watching, my question was, what if we have a legislator willing to write the bill and just get it done?
Can I respond to that?
I'm better.
You can get your steps.
So, good evening, everyone. My name's Angela Carnahan.
Look closer, it's really a soft night.
I am the regional representative from DLCD. So, one of the recommendations coming out of our white paper, and hopefully we'll have that ready for you guys here pretty soon, is that you follow your process and your comprehensive plan first. I think that the legislature will look that you do that, which is, you can put a proposal forward to Salem and the two counties to take out the language that talks about a shared regional urban growth boundary, out of your comprehensive plan. So that's where I would recommend that you go first, before you go to the legislature, so that the legislature sees that you're following a process that's in your own comprehensive plans. So, just a follow-up comment to that.
Can I say something? So before we jump even to that point, or even to the SCAPAC process, part of what we are working very hard to do is gather enough information that we want to know which direction we want to go. So, we don't know yet that we need a divorce, we don't know yet how much land or any of this. So, just, just so you know, we are working with the state, and we are short-circuiting a little bit of this, because we are now, and many of you have responded to an email that I sent out, requesting for help to be on a committee, that will be a review committee for the work on the new build-able lands inventory and the housing needs analysis. And so we are, we are trying to jump ahead in that process, and gather that information, and try to quantify that right now. So, so yes, this information is, is good, and again, this is not an action item here that we're, we're taking, it's simply explanation as to what we have before us, depending on which way we choose to go. This is not a choice of which way we're going, this is, here are your consequences, these are what you need to understand as you are making these choices.
Yeah, the, the SCAPAC process and the comp plan, it's the first time anyone in my office had seen something like that. So, you know, there's definitely unique conditions here to consider. So, also part of the recap last time, we talked about, you know, what are the elements of growth, and where the costs come from? And I think most people are pretty familiar with, there's, you know, transportation, so that's roads, sidewalks, bike paths, whatnot, police, fire, schools, you know, it's funded by the state, but it still costs the growth, so it doesn't mean, if something, just because something costs money, doesn't mean it's out of our pockets, but like utilities, you know, PGE runs, the electric lines, developers run them, those kind of things. There are also non-monetary indirect costs, and I think this is one of the places where, where we talked about last time, where traffic is one of those, for example. Are people driving farther because there isn't a place to live close to Kaiser, or are they driving, or would they drive farther because they have to move here and work in Twalleton? So there's kind of, you know, those, those kind of things are always hard to figure out. But anyway, so there's a few, one of the other ones we talked about last time, this came up when we had, we had a series of listening and working sessions with, with, well, a number of stakeholders, some, many of you in the room, and the, the single high school city, one high school town, was, was a common theme that came up, and that's something that, that could change as well. Just a couple of things. We also talked about just some reports out there to look at how costs of growth vary by the types of development. And, you know, it's not a big surprise that it's, it's more cost-effective to develop where you already have roads and you already have sewer. As we looked at the earlier map, though, there's not a lot of room in, in the city, so those are, you know, considerations. And being that we are planners and working with ODOT, we also think about impacts of transportation a lot, because also those are, any public meeting you go to, that's one of the first things people are going to talk about is transportation. So we, we'd looked into transportation impacts, and, you know, again, it's, it's not rocket science, when people can live closer to things, they drive, make shorter trips. When there's a more diverse land use arena, meaning shops, jobs, housing, activity places, then people chain their trips, park once, those sorts of things, that when we all do a little bit, it makes a big difference, you know, it's that whole thing, take the bus once a day, it's 20% less people on the roads, so, or once a week, sorry. So we talked about some of that. So we looked at some case studies, and it's kind of a refresher here, you got a short version of this report. Last time, we went into a lot more detail, just comparing our, the other cities, you know, Kaiser especially after the end of the recessions, going, going quicker, but right in the, kind of the mid-range of cities. I was really surprised, I don't know what happened to Redmond, because that's always struck me as a going place. So we looked at Woodburn, and just to, just a real quick recap on this one, 2005, Woodburn voted to expand their urban growth boundary, or they got appealed in 2005, and, and basically it came down to two things. One, they were speculating on what the economy would do for industry, so they were saying, oh, we're going, we're going to be able to grow in these, these sectors, but there was no evidence really, well, none, but they didn't have enough background for that. And the other was, a lot of their land that they chose was, was exclusive farm use land, that farmland zone, and so they got challenged by several parties. They worked it out in 2015, so they worked on it for a while, they worked it out, and they came up with, with a compromise. They removed 230 acres of farmland from that. They also agreed to a 20-year freeze, they wouldn't consider the boundary again for 20 years. I don't know where that one came from, that was interesting. McMinnville, these, McMinnville did not succeed, and I think they're going to take another run at it pretty soon. They tried to expand about 1,200 acres, and about two-thirds of that was, was high-quality farmland. And, you know, so they, they, the big thing there was, they had a lot of exception land nearby that they didn't use. And it's tough, because a lot of people live there, and they don't want to see change, but that's where the law directs us first, for farmland preservation reasons, and so they ended up trying for a while, and after about 20 years, they gave up. Like I say, I think that in the years since then, you know, their, their growth slowed some because wasn't as much place to go, as many places to go, excuse my grammar, and I think they've, they've recently been adopting some what we call efficiency measures, which are that, you know, what can they do to allow more development in existing lands, as they probably, they're not there yet, but they're probably going to look at an amendment in the near future. So, again, it was 2003, was when they were appealed, and it was 2012, no, sorry, it wasn't 20 years, it was 12, they abandoned their effort. So we'll see, we'll stay tuned on them. Though, I pulled research for one place up in the metro area, and I know it seems like really out of context, but I, I picked this one because this is one of the ones that What they did there was they had a mix of farmland and exception land. So, you know, it's, it's been fairly straightforward to expand a UGB into pure exception land, but it's been very difficult to expand in a lot of farmland. And there's two cases up in the Portland area, one is what they call Reed's Crossing, or it's old sisters of St. Mary's, big piece of property near Hillsborough, South Hillsborough. And then the other one was North Bethany. And I think North Bethany came first, it was about, it took almost 20 years for Hillsborough to come in. I was working at Metro when the council expanded the boundary there in like 97, and it got appealed, and they're finally breaking ground out there now. But that one was all farmland, whereas Bethany was a mix, and so, it's like I say, it's a little different in several ways, but it was good to include for that. The big surprise on Bethany, though, was what it cost to finally build things, but they added 800 acres, and it was a balance. But it took them about 10 years to get development going, so there was no big fight on this one, like there was with McMinnville or Woodburn, but it took a long time just to get the funding path planned figured out. And I think I mentioned, it's in the report, but they ended up finding out that they were substantially under on their revenue that they needed to develop, so they had to increase system development charges, and they had to increase the property taxes just for that area, so it's what they call local improvement district, it's like another $1.60 per thousand square feet for, I think for 20 years, something of that nature, and then it goes away. Now, it's a fabulous neighborhood, I was up there recently, but it's, and the schools are just amazing, because they, they're brand new. So, this is a time to pause and talk about that, because like I mentioned, we have like four different sections, so I kind of gave you a lot right there, but a little bit of recap on last time was mostly what that section was, with the additional research to respond to the questions we got last time, but what's the process, these sorts of things. There's a microphone, or I can repeat the question.
Kathy Clark, Mayor, I got a lot of complaints last time about the repeat the questions.
Okay.
Because A, it kind of lost the flavor, and B, it slowed it down, so if, if Nate would like to get his steps in, we can get it around. So, my question has to do with the three scenarios that you selected for this, two of which were fatally flawed, especially Woodburn, right out of the gate, going with extremely large annexations that they were going for with speculation involved, whereas our process, our process has been extremely deliberative, and the, the studies that we have done have involved, historically adversarial groups have actually been involved in our processes for all of our studies, right from the get-go. So, are there better examples of successful processes that we can look to, rather than the, ooh, scary, we don't want to try that, ones that were thrown in here with large asks?
So there's a couple others that were on the table. One was another that didn't go anywhere, was the Rogue Valley. They did some collaborative planning with a regional project. The other one I liked was Redmond, and Redmond has done a combination, I don't know if you've been to Redmond lately, but, but they've got, they've done a really nice job in their main street, their downtown area, and there's a few places where they've added into their UGB at the same time. And interestingly, Redmond and McMinnville were happening about the same time, and I think it was just a different attitude or something, because Redmond did a really good job, and McMinnville stalled. When we just talked with several folks, folks thought Redmond was just east side of the Cascades, it just didn't seem applicable, and so we didn't go with Redmond, but it was a strong consideration. So that's, that's the, that's some folks I would talk to, to learn more about their experience, because I think they've done a really good job.
So as you add the corrections and changes to this, would that be something to add in, or at least some reference materials that would help us understand a successful process and what that looked like?
I'm not sure what I've got in, you know, if there's, I don't have scope or budget to do research at this point.
Just links?
But I could, yeah, we can, we can see if there's any links out there, anything we can add.
So I guess I will just add that I can go back to our department and see what successful UGB expansions have happened in the last couple of years. There's one that happened just last month, the city of Donald expanded 80 acres for residential. Donald is a really small town of about 1,000 people, so it's a, it's a different scale, but it's a successful one, and they've worked together with all their partners to make it through. So I'll go, I'll go back and
I didn't know about Donald.
Take out some case studies.
Okay. Okay, any other questions at this time? I'll just keep going, and, yeah, microphone?
Yes, we're talking about the expanding the urban growth boundary, but why not having some redevelopment within the city limits? We have some areas where we have older houses, large lots, especially depth, not too wide, but rezone those, and maybe somebody would come in and put up apartment houses, and you'd give residence that way. If you did that close to River Road, maybe more people would be using the bus to get down to their jobs. And I don't think we need more houses in Kaiser.
Thanks for the comment. So again, I'm, I'm just trying to deliver research. I, I will show, I do have a slide that hits that exactly. We are working with the city on redevelopment planning for the River Road corridor as well. That is one of the city's, you know, high priorities, so they are looking at that absolutely. And Cherry, River Cherry. I, I mentioned it earlier, I did, I did. Okay, so let's, so I talked a little bit about these, we're going to talk about the costs for a minute, and this stuff is pretty surprising, what, what things have been costing in other places. Now, we have a very limited pool of UGB expansions that are being developed to pull from. So I looked at places that have been expanded, and then I looked at just comparable cities around here to see what cities are charging for those building permits, basically, those system charges that I mentioned earlier. So, and, because there's a difference, a big difference between here and the metro area, and just in, in the builders that are working there, you know, I know that, you know, company, my company, the stuff that we do in Beaverton is a lot more expensive than what we do in Warranton, for example, but Warranton has, doesn't have an expansion, so I didn't have anything to pull from, from that. So, it's the, pretty much the west side of, of the metro area that's had development occur. There have been UGB expansions up there in the Damascus area, which is the brownish and bluish areas on the left side of your map, and also in the Oregon City area, and in, now in the Wilsonville, between Wilsonville and Twalleton. And I recently looked at the numbers, and Wilsonville and Twalleton are right in the same place, as we're seeing Hillsborough and Beaverton. It's Wilsonville, yeah, I don't think Twalleton's permitting, but. So, what we saw there is, the average of the cities that expanded was about, they charged about $36,000 per, per building permit for a single-family home. It gets cheaper when you go to townhomes, and cheaper then when you go to apartments, because there's, there's, you know, the less impact per square foot. The, the big surprise was, for the new areas, they levied additional charges, about 25%, about $8,000 more dollars. So, I also looked at, you know, where were the big changes coming from, and I circled, you can see these little blue dots there, that the transportation is one of the main ones, so they're charging $15,000 for transportation. Big facilities up there, you know, they've got, I think Hillsborough is doing a five-lane Pinellas Pass, so there's, there's some really big transportation facilities that they're building, which, which are some of the big reasons for that. And then also, there's a parks district that feeds all of Washington County that's charging, the parks alone are close to $12,000, actually, this year, I think it's gone up to almost 13, so, for parks. And so, you know, a park costs about $2 million to make for a small park, and they, you know, there's so many per person coming in.
Is that per residential building?
Yeah, yeah. Per single-family home, it's over $12,000 for parks alone.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's Twalleton Hills, Parks and Recs, so they do trails, they do, yeah, it's, it's the open space network.
The Old Stanford.
Yeah, no, that's what I said, like, this is not, you know, the development that happens in Astoria or Warranton is, is, you know, or down here, is a lot different, but the, the places with large tracks that I know of, that where, you know, people are doing more than, you know, 50 acres at a time, it's kind of the big stuff. So, when we looked at the peer cities, this is, now, I don't, I didn't see any, there's no, there was no separate levy within Woodburn, for example, on expansion lands, they just have one system development charge rate per, per home type. And I think the, the lesson here is not a surprise, is that Kaiser is lower than the other cities, about $4,400 per, per unit, which is, you know, kind of surprisingly low, looking at actually having done, you know, sewer line cost estimations and things like that, it's, so that would obviously, you know, have to change if you're going to be expanding and building new infrastructure, but I'm surprised you can keep it that low with existing infrastructure. But anyway, so just to kind of put things in perspective, that's about, you know, it's like a tenth of what Beaverton's charging, so. The, and, you know, some of it is too, like, you don't have, have as big a needs for transportation or for big water facilities, or things like the Willamette Water Partnership that's bringing a 64-inch water line up from the Willamette River, things of that nature. So, we talked at the last session, then, you know, the input, the questions we got, you know, we talked about how, how we want to grow, we talked about the separation. The unanswered question of does, you know, can we increase affordability with expansion? Because some would say with expansion? Because some would say those tend to be more expensive units, others would say, well, raw land's cheaper to build, you know, easier to build on and get your machinery around. There are some pilot projects right now that DLCD is working on with some cities to do expansions of 50 acres or smaller for affordable housing, where they're getting, the requirement is that the market rate housing cover the affordable. So there's some interesting ideas out there taking place. We talked about the need for, you know, this is just kind of the things that we heard. We talked about that need for housing, you know, closer to jobs, whether it was Canyon City, you know, Canyon Cities, or folks, you know, just moving into rural countryside. And then congestion always comes up, and it's a tough one, because it's kind of like taxes are always too high, no one's ever happy with congestion. It's just one of those things, we got to find what the right level we want to, you know, live with is. The, we are limited in Kaiser with really one good north-south route, other than, you know, using the Parkway. But, so any, any development anywhere is adding trips to that. Obviously, you know, the higher-density folks, as you mentioned, can walk more, take the bus more, and take shorter trips, but they're still trips. And so, you know, it's localized, it might be more congestion, but system-wide, it might work better. So, that was just a little bit on the input that I got. Is there any questions on that? Did I miss anything? Okay. So, the, the other part of our scope then was to say, okay, how does that relate to then policy, policy issues that the city should be looking at? So this is where we kind of ask that question, you know, is how do we want to grow? Do we grow up? Do we grow in, do we grow up, do we grow out? We did both. And so, this slide here actually is from the revitalization plan that we're, that we're doing analysis for right now. And so we've done some scenarios. We took the existing forecast, and then we said, what if we upzone those large residential parcels? What if we take some of the multifamily that's right near commercial intersections and make it mixed-use, or make it commercial? And we did find that we could get about 800 more units in that core alone than were forecasted. Now, you wouldn't get the same bang for the buck as you move farther away, because the lands are, have lower-density housing on them, and you're not going to way upzone in the middle of a neighborhood. You can, you can do a big, maybe an upzone, really, we just kind of, little things like changing setbacks, so that it's easier to get a duplex in, or townhouses in, making the geometries work. So it's pretty interesting there. The trade-off, though, is 80% of that new development is multifamily. And this is always one of these who-are-we-character questions about, you know, on one hand, housing's housing, we need it. On the other hand, we think of ourselves, in a lot of our cities, as being single-family cities and towns. And even though that wouldn't change the city overnight, it is, it is different. The products that come on the market, become available, are different than what we're used to. And I've just got a few examples, everything from, you know, accessory dwelling units to townhouses, to, you know, there's a forestry building from Bend that I threw in there, because that's, I think, a feasible market model. The expansion, you know, process is, you know, growing out, and obviously, there's all of the above.
Are you going to talk about affordability in this stuff, sorry?
Are you going to loop back on this regarding affordability? Because price points, we talked about last time, were beyond the reach of a lot of folks, and we are already designated as a housing cost burdened, rent-burdened community already. And if we are building units, multifamily is not cheap. And the price points are beyond a lot of families.
So the, the rent burden household status is actually one of the reasons that the city has gotten the grants that Nate mentioned a moment ago, with doing updated housing needs analysis, updated building, buildable lands inventory, et cetera. The price points themselves can vary very widely by type. I can run, I did for the revitalization plan, we've run a number of pro forma. We've actually run like individual building pro forma as part of scenario work. I don't have that with me, because I, it's a kind of a different, different project. But in, it, in, on a per-square-foot basis, multifamily housing can be more expensive to build, but you have more units in one place. So, when the land is expensive, multifamily ends up being a much better deal. When land isn't expensive, single-family can be, you can do affordable single-family, because you're not having to spend as much on land. So, that's a very simple, you know, and really very site-by-site location and access, all those kind of things. Some of the taller stuff, like that Bend example, you can't do that affordable, market rate affordable. The, when you get to the four and a fifth story, the engineering required for the building, you end up getting, and I could give you numbers, but you're getting closer to like, you know, $2 a square foot to build, or $185, you know. So you need to, you need to get rents that are up at like, I can't remember off the top of my head, but like up at like, you know, $1,600 a month for a three-bedroom apartment, $1,200, two-bedroom apartment, you know, to make something like that work, and that's kind of close. So, we can talk about that when we come back for the revitalization plan, because I've got a lot of performers that we did a bunch of number crunching on, because we, so the scenario that's behind me, it's all based on buildings that worked in the market. So there's a lot of, the multifamily is predominantly the two-story walk-up, so not the expensive four-story elevator-served, things like that. So, okay. So, as I said, the other option, and again, it's never really one or the other, but all these kind of angles, is the expansion model. And this is an image from Sherwood right now. They have, they've been doing some planning on expanding to their west side, and I just, I'm not involved with this one, but I like the designer they have, so I grabbed it off their website. Because I think that they're doing, they've done a nice job here of showing really, I think this is, it really, I don't know if you can see in the scale, but it's a really nice way to look at using greenfield vacant land. They have a mix of, they've got a new school site, they have some small little commercial nodes, and then they have some really large tracks for, for housing. And I think the big advantage to this, obviously, is that they can get larger room, bigger sites to do larger developments, whether they are single-family homes, which we can't do in the redevelopment scenario, or if they're large employers can come in there. And in this case, a school, because schools need like 40 acres nowadays. Again, you know, this would require UGB expansion to get land to be able to do a plan like this. But, and then, obviously, this is all new infrastructure. Interestingly, Sherwood was requesting to come into the urban growth boundary with this plan, and they pulled out. And I don't know why. I think people were feeling some growing pains, is kind of the concern that I got. There's too much happening all at once, school at bonding capacity, something like that. But, I think this is going to happen, it's just going to take a little more time. They've put some, you know, some good money into it, and I mean, you can see the green belt in there, you can see there's very, very thoughtful planning. Then, this is another example here, and this is, again, it's retrospective, I wish I would have gone to Redmond, but I know Beaverton. They're doing a really pretty bang-up job right now of doing both infill and greenfield development. The bottom picture is just a rendering, because right now it's covered in that Tyvek wrap. But they, they bought an old movie theater site in town with Metro. They actually bought Metro out, so it's all theirs, and they have made development offerings, and they're getting a hotel, they're getting apartment buildings, and it's, you know, it's kind of a whole new, you know, urban streetscape and everything right downtown. So they've done a lot of work that. And then, in the expansion areas they've got, they're doing a pretty efficient job with the housing there. You can't see, it's too small, but their houses tend to be, I just turned up Zillow, they tend to be like $465 to $580, $580,000 apiece. So it's not affordable by any means. It's nice. I mean, the infrastructure's all brand-new, they're doing a nice job with trails, all those kinds of things. But, anyway, so I think, though, they're kind of an example, though, of a city that's working really hard on both, both sides. They have, I think, five planners that are mostly dedicated just to the South Cooper Mountain expansion area. So just kind of put things in perspective, it's, it's a lot of work. And then, the other consideration we talked about, and just wanted to bring it up, is, is change. People, we tend to not like change, no matter what it is. So it's, this is one that gets you on both sides, and so you have to be thinking about this with any planning endeavor. When you're bringing in more redevelopment, when you rezone, or enable some of those single-family lots to convert, there's neighbors next to them. And kind of this little rendering here at the bottom is like, that, you know, it's a proposal of a place, but it's, you know, four-story buildings where there used to be not much. And so that's the kind of change that might, might worry people. And if you get on nextdoor.com and follow a lot of Portland neighborhoods, you see a lot of debates when someone goes and puts 11 homes on a lot that's been vacant, you know. On the other hand, on the outside, if you look at the exception lands north of town, which is the picture there, like, there are some big roofs, there are some expensive homes. And so then, they're also going to be very unhappy, too. So, there's no pleasing everybody in planning, that's the tough thing. You try to find the middle grounds best you can. I just wanted to bring this up, because change is always a sensitive point with everybody. So, we have to think about that as the city moves forward. And that's what, you know, public engagement work is all about, and bringing in the stakeholder groups and learning more what people care about. But, I just wanted to bring that up. Any questions? Kind of hit a few topics, yeah. Microphone's coming.
So, is what the market dictates based in your study here somehow? I hear things like, well, we look at this, and if we do this, we do this. But, how much of that does the city have to develop and say, here, this is what we want to do, or force the people to do? And, and how much of it is market-driven?
Right. Really good questions. And I think one of the things that, you know, if you, you know, Andy Dyke, the Chair of Washington County, you know, he would say, the public has decided that growth should pay for itself, rather than it being a community investment. And, and that frustrates him. He doesn't like the way that the SDCs have gone in Washington County, gotten so expensive. And, but that's, you know, where he felt like he ran into a wall with the voters, and people just not wanting to pick up that tab. Because others would say, it's an investment in that, that land brings in property taxes, that then pays for things, just not the first day it's built. You know, it takes time. The, the model on the urban side, the redevelopment side, is a little different in that, so I mentioned that scenario. That, we, we used our economic consultant for that, the scenario work that we developed, to create building prototypes that would match what the, what we're seeing the market do. And that's basically land costs, building costs, construction costs, and rent levels. And there are some things the city can do regulatorily that open up those doors. And I mentioned, one of them was setbacks. There's a lot of places where townhouses are allowed, for example, but you can't do a three-story townhouse, because you have to set it back to the point where it doesn't work anymore. Like, you can move a building around a lot, but at the end of the day, bathtubs are a certain length, you know, beds are a certain length, you need to have that kind of space allotment. So there's some code things like, that are kind of low-hanging fruit, that can enable some of these developments. I think this example here was, you know, Portland's been doing this, what they call residential infill program, where corner lots can be made into threeplexes. You can do a duplex if you're in any kind of medium, single-family zone, things like that, that are just, just changing the code, no cost. There are other programs cities can get into. And some of them cost a lot, some of them cost a little. In an urban environment, like one of the classics would be for cities to develop parking. And that way, they can lower the parking ratio on properties, because parking is what kills a lot of development. You have to make room for the cars. And so, that, you know, that two-story apartment that I talked about, it's got 1.7 cars per unit. Well, if that developer does .7 onsite, and there's shared facility nearby or something, then they, then they can get more out of their properties, they might, they can get more value without having to do anything. But the city took out some costs there. Another common thing, I mean, so that Beaverton example, they bought the land, that gives them some control. So they were able to say, yeah, it's a market, it's a profitable thing, you can do it, we'll give you the land, but we have these expectations. And that's one of the things, the ways they can guarantee some affordability, they can guarantee some certain design kind of things. They have a say in what gets built, rather than just putting it in the law, that we want it this tall and this kind of windows. They can, actually, at the table, they can work through room size, number of three bedrooms versus two bedrooms, you know, that kind of thing. Another component there that we see cities do is what we call catalytic projects, where you partner, like that Beaverton example, you partner on a project that should pencil the day, but developers don't have the confidence to do it yet. And so you just have a little bit of, a little bit of a gap. It gets you, as a jurisdiction, it gets you to skin of the game, so you can get some of the things that you want, in terms of how it's designed, or the housing composition within it. But then you can use it to prove the market to other developers that were afraid to take the first step into an area. So, it's kind of thing, like if two-story walk-up is working right now, what would it take to do a three-story with podium parking? Well, it's, you know, it's going to add a little bit of cost, they might be afraid that they're not going to recoup that. And it's, it's really a fine line with, with developers. I mean, I look at an entitled site that was for five stories over parking, and developers had a, they had a hard time selling it. And the person who bought it is coming in and replating it at a forestry building, so it doesn't have to do structured parking. And that difference, you know, we think more units the better, but it's, parking is, we live and die by it in so many ways. So, another thing, and the city was doing this with, you know, the, the physical improvements through the redevelopment authority, our agency. So, the streetscape improvements, storefront improvement grants, things like this, that start kind of setting the tone or stage, can also encourage others and create that kind of thing, kind of buzz or energy to, you know, other people that want to, you know, fix up their shop. There's, there's lots of little levers and tools. At the end of the day, though, it's, you know, we're trying to be like the jujitsu, kind of take the market forces and kind of maybe bring them this way. Say, look, look around this corner, there's things you could do here, too, you know, unless, unless we're owning land and spending a lot of money.
If Measure 102 were to pass, would that change our model?
So, Measure 102, for those who don't know, it allows, so right now, if your government agency, you, you can build something, but you can't give money to someone for them to build it. And that's a very simplified definition. It, it came from us not wanting to be in debt to the railroad developers who are building the railroads. We didn't want it to be on our backs. And there are a couple of projects in the Portland area, affordable housing levies, where they found out, I think after Portland passed the first one, that they couldn't give money to local housing authorities. They could do it themselves, but then the prices go up, for a few reasons. So, I don't think it's directly related here, unless you were doing an affordable housing project, and you had an affordable, affordable housing developers that you wanted to fund to do those. So, so I think it's a, it's a change to the constitution to allow Portland's affordable housing bond to be activated. They figure they'll get 30% more units if, if they're allowed to spend money and let the private folks do it. I think a part of that is they don't have to use prevailing wage. So, yeah. Nate, we have a hand in the back.
If I understand your analysis, if you're building new houses out in the, in the UGB expansion area, the developers paying giant SDCs, they're paying for most of the infrastructure. But, but the city could put some of that in, could put in some of the streets and sewers and stuff. Would you have any figures on, like, return on investment for doing something like that versus improving your center area where you've already got all the infrastructure? I mean, what, what's the bottom line for the city as far as taxes and return on investment?
Yeah. That'd be, that would be, there's no easy answer to that one. That'd be complicated. I'd want to do actual, do research, get some economists. And I, I do have kind of a, you know, I feel like with the financing of new development, it's really more of a financing problem than a funding problem. Because a lot of times, the, a lot of times, the property values and taxes over time can cover things, but no one can do, you know, the long loans that might take. So we put, because we don't want to affect our general fund or our bottom line right now, we put on the developers. And so then, you know, they, we have less control. You know, and I think in terms of return on, pure return on investment, I think there's a difference between good fiscal planning and planning for return on investment. Cities aren't for-profit companies, right? So you're having to, you're, as a city, you're trying to address the needs of various segments in society. And needs are also desires. I mean, you know, what makes the community, or the community character and all that. So it's not as simple as saying, does this make more money than that? Because if it did, we'd just all do commercial. I mean, commercial land generates far more taxes than residential land. And we're not a sales tax state. If we're a sales tax state, you want a Walmart, you know, and car dealerships and things like that, because those are just, you know, planning for dollars. So, you know, that's kind of, you know, and even when we look at, and actually, we had a map in the report, I think, when we look at, it surprises, it surprises you, small lot and multifamily development actually generates more per-square-foot in taxes than large lot development. The question, though, is who's using more services? You know? So, there's industrial properties that generate good taxes and jobs, that's a separate side, the multiplier. They might need more policing, because you got big unlit areas at night that people can go and congregate, you know? And that's a different cost. Whereas, you know, the cul-de-sac doesn't usually have that many police trips. So, there's a lot of things, things to weigh.
If I could jump in a little bit, it gets into the discussion around systems development charges, SDCs, which can only be used for new capacity. And we ran into this, of course, with parks, and I'm sure this has been updated in, in the report, because report, because maintaining the parks is an ongoing expense, and you can't use SDCs for that. SDCs are only for new capacity. So if you're talking about transportation SDCs, you end up with a different color of money being able to be used on different types of projects. Infill projects are going to have a different color of money than expansion projects.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think there's, I think there was one anecdote or story in the report, that, not story, when we charge impact fees, sometimes even, sometimes above those SDCs, there's also impact fees. If we know that there's a light that's going to fail, it's not on that person's property, we make them pay their share. But you can't make a person pay for the entire light or intersection improvement, you can only make them pay for their impact. And so that's another one where it can be dangerous, because we have to then pick up the rest or live with the congestion. Or if it's a safety issue, that's even worse. Long discussions, you go on and on with this kind of things. All right. So I talked a little bit about transportation choice, just to be cognizant of it, because it's really easy when we're talking about land use to forget about some of these things. But there are a lot of people that don't drive, can't drive, don't want to drive, whether they're old, they're kids, or they're smart environmentalists, whatever they're going to be, right? So I talked, let me just kind of highlight some of the things that can happen. This is actually a project that I worked on for the city of Salem. And this is an issue, this is taking commercial street and creating different transportation choices, just using some paint and some concrete. They're not making huge changes to the signals, but they're putting in bus stops, nice bus stops, putting in crosswalks and safety median islands, cutting off some turning places that were conflicts that were scary. And I can show you a couple of pictures of some really crazy pedestrian traffic on the street and landscaping, things like this. And the thing about this is it's investment in transportation and commercial development, because that kind of effort they put in ups the value of the property adjacent to it, which is how then a private property owner can respond with enhanced development. So in this case, they were, you know, trying to get bicycle safety, pedestrian safety, and can see it was a very narrow sidewalk with no buffer between the traffic before. So now they've changed that. It says, it's not built yet, but just one example of how streetscape improvements, that's one of the things that we're talking about with the River Road and Cherry Corridor, how, when and where streetscape improvements can make a big difference. There's also, and this is, I thought about taking this out because it seems so off-topic for the big conversation, but looking in the city's transportation system plan, there's a lot of language about consolidating driveways and shared access points. It seems wonky and nerdy, but I'll tell you, you know, when you are the person in the wheelchair and there's four driveways on a property that all have a slant, it's not pleasant. And it also, for a bicyclist or for a person just walking on the street or jogging, it's a lot more conflict points. And so these are the kind of things that you, we call this like a park-once type district. If all of a sudden, four businesses are accessible by the same driveway, and it's a really short jaunt not on the main street, or even if it is now, it's nicer, I'll park once, I'll hit two things. So it might be the dry cleaner and my pharmacist. You know, that's kind of like my life, that's what I do. My dry cleaner and my pharmacist are in the same little area, so I do it at the same time. But that's, you know, those are the kind of things that add up. We make 10 trips a day per person, all of a sudden, you start knocking off one, two, or three of those, and it adds up over time, and it's like buying capacity on the roadways and using less fuel and carbon and all that. There's also new technologies that are coming out. I don't know if you've been watching the e-scooter thing, it's in bigger cities, but they're pretty cheap. They're testing them out, they're finding they get a lot of use. The thing I wanted to mention about these, though, is these do have staffing requirements. I mean, Portland is fielding a heck of a lot of phone calls, they're not wearing a helmet, they're on the sidewalk, all these kind of things. And then someone's, you know, doing studies and doing counts and all that. So, you know, even though you can get, like with these scooters, it's totally private investment. I mean, the city didn't have to do it themselves, but you have to be spending your money and your staff time to make sure you're not getting run over. And you saw the same thing with Lyft and Uber and all these other, you know, kind of things that we have, you know, different cities, different permitting requirements, bike shares and other ones. So I just kind of mentioned a couple of these things that are out there. And then, now I'm really going to nerd out, talk about scenario planning a little bit. So I gave you a glimpse of the scenario planning with the Kaiser revitalization plans, the Cherry, River Road, Cherry Corridor. So this will explain a little bit about, your question's about how do we do those buildings, trying not to dwell too much on this. On the right side, we come up with a library of buildings. And so for these, like I mentioned, I've run these building prototypes, so I have a two-story, I have a three-story, I have it parked this way, I have a single-family home. And then, yes. Thanks. That way. Yep. And then we can combine these into groups, like you might see in a given zone, you don't see just one house type or one building type, you might see several. And so we'll have the range of things that happens within a zone, so we can paint them onto a map, we can test out this theory of what if we changed the rules to allow duplexes? What if we changed the rules to allow apartments or mixed use? And so the idea is these buildings, and then what we call development types, but it'd be like zoning, so the things that happen this type, and we can develop scenarios and we can evaluate them. So this is, this is a little cartoon, you can see in this case, you know, the main street there got repainted to purple, and then you might have seen, if I go back and forth, actually, we can watch the, what we call indicators of values change. So on the right side, well, actually, at the bottom, you can see the little bar charts change a little bit, but maybe they didn't, they did on my computer. Anyway, so there's a couple of options, like, there's different things we do here. This is an example of the exact same population, and this is a little bigger area, so these, we have squares instead of actual parcels. But in this, these pictures, you have the same number of people in each map. And so then we can evaluate and see what happens to their driving habits, what's the housing mix like, what's the affordability, what's the tax revenue, all these kind of different things that we can gauge. And so that's kind of our grow-in, grow-up, grow-out kind of thing. And then another, this is, y'all watched Chip and Joanna in Waco, Texas? So before they came to Waco, I had the pleasure of working on Waco's downtown plan. And what Waco was trying to do was say, "We're getting forgotten, we're between Austin and Dallas, and we have these great bones, we have this river, help us." And so what they came up with was, we did scenarios with Waco to show how, what would happen to get 10,000 more people? What are the places that we have to develop first? And so then 20,000 people, and ultimately, they wanted like, shoot for the moon, 65,000. It's coming true. I mean, they're on TV now, you know? But the idea here was, so this wasn't about, this is, you know, more like what we're doing on the River Road, Cherry Avenue corridor, we're looking at a finite area, and we're saying, "What's the possibilities in here?" Whereas UGB scenario planning is much more like the other one, where you say, "If we change the overall mix, if we change the land use, how does that affect our bigger-picture land form?" So these are, and, you know, the state of Oregon has a scenario planning guidelines, you know, this is, it's not new stuff. It was originally developed by the folks at Royal Dutch Shell, because they were trying to figure, "How do we anticipate what's going to happen with oil price changes and this, that, and the other?" And the idea with scenario planning is you're not just testing out alternatives, I like this one, I like that one, what's best, but you test out features you may not want to see as well, to find out if they hurt, if they help, and where, what the cost might be. So I got one last section, any questions on that? Yeah.
So Waco actually had employment and industry as well as residential?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you see, the blue is industry, the purple is mixed use. And, yeah, they're, and, you know, they were kind of run down. I mean, there was a lot of kind of empty-ish stuff in the downtown, and they've done an amazing job of sticking with it.
But there are jobs there.
Yeah, 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 no, they're doing great. Yeah. So, okay, so since we're kind of unfolding into this, you know, fiscal analysis and planning, there's another part of scenario planning I was going to touch on, and we're about done. But I talked about, when we're doing planning, we're looking at the needs and desires of community and character and sensitivity to change, and then obviously, environmental stewardship, the farming economy, the urban economy, the industry, the jobs, all of that commuting. We, you mentioned, you asked the question about, is there a return on investment for what we do? There always is to some degree, you know? On some investments, we say, "What's the leverage? If we spend this much money, how much will the private sector spend in response?" Sometimes it's, "If we spend this much money, what's our long-term debt and operation and maintenance on it, and is that worth it?" I mean, like a library, for example, doesn't create, or a museum, the city might be involved, it doesn't create money in and of itself, doesn't get a development to happen, but it provides needs for the community. And so therefore, it's the investments that, same with affordable housing, that cities choose to make. And so it's just a matter, like, you know, we like to say in planning, wherever you're going to do any program or investment, you want to map out and analyze how that money's going to be used, what the long-term impacts, benefits, and so you can weigh the consequences. And, you know, there's a lot of performance planning that cities will do then with their budgets, so that they're then saying, "Have we met these targets?" It can be from a land use planning thing, this can be from just full-on, your investment structure and your retirement accounts and all these kinds of things. But when you're spending big monies on infrastructure, it's a finite amount of money, and so we want to make sure, we always want to make sure we're doing it wisely. With the scenario planning lens, there's the possibility to go closer to what you're asking. And there's a tool that the Fed has, this fiscal impact tool. What you do, what we do, and I was showing you images from Envision Tomorrow, which is an open-source, free scenario planning software. You have to, you know, it's not plug-and-play, you can't get off the internet and play, you have to know how to use GIS and how to do performance, but it's there. There's a module to that that is a fiscal health module that you can run, and what it'll do is it takes in the tax rates, incomes, demographics, and then, based on your development pattern, because you know what the sewer and water roughly costs on a per-foot basis and roads, and you know what the revenues are going to be off taxes, because you've loaded in your mileage rates, and it allows you to project those things out into the future to say, "Okay, what does our health look like in 2040, based if we're built out, or 2050, or whenever, you know, the things are finally in place, you know, what's happening to our fiscal outlook?" And this, I did this, I worked on a project in the Cleveland area with this, and in their case, they had a lot of cities were actually going bankrupt, and some cities thought, "Hey, I'm doing great, getting all these building permits, these SDCs." But we saw a trend that the third-ring suburbs were doing great, the second-ring suburbs were starting to go broke, because they had this operations and maintenance load they couldn't handle, because people were leaving. And they needed to think about it as a region, and so when we, showing these numbers to the third-ring suburb, it was a wake-up call for them, because they didn't realize that the heyday of today won't be here in five years, we're going to be suffering. So this is, you know, a tool that's really good for that kind of, you know, of level, but it's pretty fascinating stuff, it's very, you know, in the numbers, so. Any questions on that? So hopefully, I got to your answer on the other question. So I kind of put together this, kind of, I put together kind of a last slide here to just kind of touch on, you know, the big-picture question of if you want to look at growing out, moving the boundary, what are the things that should happen, it's not a have-to. The recommendation is, you know, for legal reasons and others, wait till the 2021 forecast numbers, because you've got, you'll have all the good data then to make, you know, for you to make decisions, you have your own forecast. I'd recommend the scenario planning process, I mean, I think you see, there's a lot of potential and power there, and it's good for communicating outcomes and results based on how they affect either policies you have in your comp plan, or when you do your public input, you find the things that are important to people. Then you can say, of these five scenarios, there's three scenarios, here's how they fit along with these different goals. Some people, it might be money-only, others, people, it might be housing affordability, others, it might be transportation, they're their hot buttons. And what you find, you never have one that's perfect, you have components of multiple scenarios that you try then, you know, put together, that's what a plan is, that's what helps you with your comprehensive plan, updates, and development. But, and I've put in here something that's not a required, like Oregon thing, but it's an implementation plan, a strategic plan. And this isn't a land use action, this is just like you do with budgeting for anything, it's determining what are the projects, what are the programs we want to be investing in. These can be land use, they can be libraries, they can be healthcare, affordable housing, whatever. But putting those programs together based on the things that are working in your scenario planning. And then I've kind of put in a sub-spot there, the, you know, if expansion is what you've determined you want to do from that, then just kind of reiterated that process, which is the SCAPAC process, which would be bringing the jurisdictions together, comprehensive plan updates, you know, master plan, expand, annex permit. I didn't include the legislative option on this kind of summary, we talked about that earlier. And then, and like I said, with or without the UGB expansion, the strategic plans are, you know, that's where the rubber hits the road, that's where you are making sure you're spending money in the right places and you're going for the outcome people want, that's independent of whether you're growing up or growing out, that's just filling up the character, the needs of the community. So that was my last slide. Yeah.
So are you saying that Kaiser is always going to be a bedroom community? You're talking about going out, extending the urban growth boundary, but you haven't talked about industry or anything else like that?
Yeah, so I'm not saying that, actually, and I think it's one of the, one of the powers of that scenario planning approach, is you can absolutely look at how to repurpose lands inside the boundary, how to find other lands that are not in the boundary. Like I mentioned with the Sherwood example, they could get some big tracks outside the boundary for the school, but that could very easily be manufacturing, that could very easily be offices. So that's a question for you and the city. I'm just really going through the process here. I would say, and we talk about it in the report, that there are some disadvantages to having such a low job-to-housing ratio, because as I mentioned, the commercial property brings in a lot more taxes, and it also, there's this multiplier effect, especially when you have, you know, industry, any job that exports, whether it's ideas, products, or actual, you know, physical things, it brings money into a region or into a community that then lets the person with the dry cleaning shop open up, or the accountant, or whatever that. So there's a multiplier. They say in Seattle, there are eight jobs for every one job at Boeing, because of Boeing. So, you know, I think Intel, they say, is about a four to one, five to one in the Portland area. So to get that in perspective, some of those base employment is hugely important to fiscal health of the community. And I was shocked when I saw that we are at, the city here is .4 jobs per household. I mean, I would have thought it would have been more like .8, .9, to see that was that low, it surprised our economists as well. So a lot of cities look at planning for one, one to 1.5, somewhere in that range, when they look at what the health of the city could be. In our scenario planning testing for the corridor, we did try creating some scenarios that really pushed some, you know, the job growth. And you have to make a big splash to make an overall change in the height of the sea, so to speak, because, you know, with just a few properties in the scenarios, we weren't doing that much growth, but, you know, putting in, converting more things into employment, less into housing, because a lot of that, housing is one of the easier things to do in a lot of the zones we have here. So apartments are pretty straightforward, so getting some of those other commercial entities going can be a little trickier, and so we're looking at ways we could do that. But you gotta do quite a bit, so, but it's a good goal.
So just to put in the, in the mix of the conversation, our last economic opportunities analysis, we, which has been acknowledged by the state, we carved out the fact that we need 50 acres of additional employment lands, based on a lot of things, our goals and our vision statement. So we've long acknowledged that there needs to be more employment land in Kaiser, and it was not challenged, and it has been acknowledged. But again, the world changes, with each legislative session, the world changes, so obviously, there's more work to do. But anyway, that's, it is an acknowledged need of the city.
Yes, institutional and commercial. I think, I think the institutional at the time, the discussion was kind of healthcare-related? Yeah, yeah. Which is also a community service enterprise. But good question. We have one in the back.
I know you're doing the analysis, but as I look at Kaiser, and when it was zoned and created under the county, it just seems to me like there's an awful lot of large, single-family lots that we're not, you know, dividing those, or maybe changing the codes that they have and access by a super alley rather than a street. I saw that happen in a neighborhood I was in in Salem, where the city facilitated, there was a group of long lots up against the cemetery, the city facilitated, the owners that had, I mean, they were just mowing the back of their lots, of putting in a super alley so that, I forget, half a dozen single-family lots were created and single-family houses were put in there, and it was, I was on the neighborhood board at the time, it was a non-issue.
That's a, that's a really good point.
I know you're looking at it.
Yeah.
And also, Kaisers, near Central Kaisers, a lot of 1920s, 1940s, 1950s houses, maybe weren't the best when they were built, they're, and I'm not being negative, but I mean, they're going to come up for redevelopment in the next 20 or 30 years.
Yeah.
And if they're on a large lot, maybe you have three lots rather than one. So I guess I'm questioning a little bit that there isn't the room in the city.
Yeah, let me, so, um... Yeah, let me, so, the, the question of room. So the housing needs analysis and the economic opportunities analysis says, "If you continue using," correct if I'm wrong here, "but if you continue using the land the way you are today, you're going to have demand for this much more than you can provide." So changes, like you're talking about, can absolutely change that. We, we did test some of these in the corridor only. We tested some of the single-family conversions. It looks like, to me, like there's some stuff that might have been even developed on Septic way back, so it's pretty good size. Now it's served by sewer, so you could get more housing on it. I, looking at kind of a macro scale, I couldn't get in and do like, this lot, that lot. But I found when there were groupings of oversized lots, we see, yeah, that's probably a space that someone, because I've seen developers do just that. And then one image I showed you up there, actually, I have a colleague of mine, she did six units, three single-family homes and three ADUs on one lot, with a shared yard, actually, because it's a giant oak tree. And so she did it around it to share the tree. And so that was what would have been one house, or probably was one house, and it became six. So there's lots and lots of examples out there. And that, especially with that residential infill program, like I've talked about in Portland, where they're, they're encouraging things like duplexes and accessory units. Those add even more, more options closer. And I think if you looked beyond the corridor, where you get into a lot more of those single-family lots, you'd see even more opportunities. I thought I saw a hand.
Right here.
There you go.
Thanks. My name's Bruce Anderson, actually, current city councillor. But, once upon a time, I was on the planning commission and chaired it for about five or six years. And, one of the things this gentleman brought up is something that we did address at some point, and Nate would have to address kind of the nuances of that. One of the challenges before Kaiser Incorporated was that most of our area was really as planned and zoned by the county, because we were in the county. So notably, in southeast Kaiser, where I used to live, you've got all of those long, skinny lots. And so one of the issues that we, that came up back then was, how can you coordinate all of these somehow? Because, you know, one of the, the thing you run into is flag lots. Yeah, those are certainly permitted or allowed, but, gosh, do they really look that great? Or, probably not. So, one of the things that we tried to do at that point was to try and coordinate the development somehow. If you could get a few neighbors to together, coordinate those so that there is more of a cohesive neighborhood feel, if you will. So if you can do some of that coordination, that, it seems like that would be one of those good things that would also be able to do that. Also, last time you were here, one of the things I'd love, I don't know if this got incorporated into this or not, but some of these lots along River Road, somehow coordinating, you know, kind of the back of the property type of transportation route? Oh, okay, oh, sorry, I'm confusing projects.
It's two projects, same person.
Okay.
And I blended some of that project into this to help explain some things.
Okay. And the final point I'll bring up is, being cautious with how we zone properties. Once upon a time, we did have this thing called the Shimawa Activity Center. That was a great idea, not practical whatsoever. Because over the approximate 20 years that we had that, I think we had maybe two or three bites at possibly trying to develop that. And that just didn't come to fruition. And so eventually, we had somebody step forward, say, "Hey, how about we try something like this?" And that's why we have Kaiser Station, because that really did make some sense in terms of where that property is located. And, somehow, I'd love it if some point in time, our land use planning system can bring in some, some thought about, "Gosh, maybe that makes sense for that to go there." Rather than having a big, you know, lush, rolling lawn type of tech park. I'd love to have the high-tech jobs here, but practically speaking, next to I-5, that just didn't make sense. And, we didn't see that develop really until the zoning and the whole scope of that changed. So, thank you.
I think that kind of...
I want, I want to get that on the record, though, Nate, because we're talking about how we're going to be looking at designating certain property, and I think that's fine. But also, I just would hope that we could bring some practicality into that as well.
Yeah. And, I'll just touch on that other project for a second. The, the scenarios have kind of showed us what would happen if. So the, that one I showed, the efficient scenario, that was really just looking at opening the doors a little bit on the code, wasn't actually targeting any properties. The next step would be, like you said, looking at, are there places where, and we've done this, we've taken a couple scenarios, we're taking a look at what the gains could be if you were to consolidate some properties along river, for example, or if you were to take a couple of the lay-down yards in the Cherry Avenue industrial area and say, "Hey, maybe that converts into this new kind of maker space," you know, something like that. And that might be something you do with, with some zoning updates or changes. But, we haven't, we're not, there's no proposal, I guess is what I should say. We're just a little bit of testing. Yeah.
And, I was giving councillor Anderson a bad time, but it shows how important it is, it shows how important it is that these two projects are unfolding at the same kind of time. And it is a challenge, same person to do different projects, same kinds of subjects. But it shows you how they're related. And as we look at the efficiency measures that are coming out of the revitalization project that we're doing, you'll need to keep this in context with that. So, and that's why we kind of wanted to make sure that we had this project as part of the background as we unfold the next project, so.
So, Glenn and Nate both touched on the housing needs analysis. So, the legislature this biennium passed a bill that gave our department close to $2 million to help communities update their housing needs analysis and their buildable land inventory. And I just wanted to say, these are some great ideas of looking at how you can increase residential land inside the city, so keep them for that project. I think they're great that we're talking about them now, so maybe, Nate, you're keeping track of the people who are making the comments. But we're hoping that we sign that contract for, with the city, with the consultant, and then send it over to the city to start that work in the next couple weeks. So you will have affordability as part of that, you'll know how much land is inside of the, of your urban area within the shared UGB. And, because we have to use PSU's forecast, they will do a split. It's going to be a one-off split, so you will have a population that's specific to your urban area, and then in 2021, it will be official. So, just great comments on the housing side, just hopefully, it's being recorded, so, they'll come back up again.
And, as I mentioned earlier, so we sent out an email requesting your help. And honestly, many of you have responded positively to that email, so thank you. I don't know, because we don't have a contract yet, I don't know exactly what that committee is going to be. But, you will be getting some information, and it may be a large committee, I don't know. So, stay tuned, as I said in my email.
I'd also like to point out that during the housing needs analysis that we completed, we did a lot-by-lot assessment of infill. And many of those lots are now turning over, because it's economically feasible to do that, if you can get a contractor. Good luck right now. I've got two houses going in right behind me. I live in one of the older neighborhoods, my house was built in 1960. We have the deep lots and everything, and it is happening, because there is such a demand. I'm just waiting for the one more to fill in on one of those little side streets off of Not So Lost Lane anymore. So, once those fill in, again, those are, those are gone, they are, they're going to be used up. But it's happening throughout our neighborhoods. So, even with that lot-by-lot count, we were still short of all housing types. And for us to rely on another city, another planning commission, a whole separate city to take care of our housing needs, I think is really dodging our own responsibility to provide for our city and our community in a comprehensive way. That's why I keep pushing on the jobs thing, is because if I hear one more time, "Well, people are commuting." Well, no kidding! You know, we don't live on air, so people have to commute to jobs. So unless we're talking about a comprehensive look at how we, as Kaiser, our Kaiser, it's got to include jobs. Otherwise, let's drop this pretense that we're going to not be commuting. Because people actually, I know this is kind of bourgeois, but they actually have to work. And that to do that, telecommuting for a lot of people doesn't work. There's a lot of jobs that you don't want to have done by telecommuting, you want to talk to a human being. And, you need to talk to a human being. So, this has got to be part of that comprehensive look at Kaiser specifically. And not try to fob off, "Well, Salem can do the big, dirty, hard work of managing that, of annexing more developable land while we sit here within our current UGB and pretend that everything's okay." Well, we're grown-ups in the room, too. And we are going to need to take care of employment and housing and come together as a community as we figure this out, and not rely on somebody else. So, there's one of my little soapboxes.
You're absolutely right. And within the shared UGB, you can't expand. So Kaiser has to make that decision. As Glenn was saying, he's laying out facts, he's laying out information for you to take and to say, "Do we want to stay a bedroom community, or do we want to expand and chart our own course?" The system is set up the way it is, where it's a shared UGB. So your land supply is taken into consideration with the same rate that Salem's is. That's just the system that we have. But, it doesn't mean you're locked into that system, it just means you have to follow a process to get out. So, Glenn was going through that list, our white paper will explain that same process. And, you just have to make a decision as a city, which way you want to go. But I think it's important that you're doing all these studies to look at what it's going to cost. I mean, is the city ready to take on those costs that come with expanding an urban growth boundary?
Just so you know what's on the docket for, in the planning horizon. Currently, right now, at Planning Commission, we are looking at the accessory dwelling unit standards. That's going to be kind of a big conversation. That's going to affect neighborhoods, that's going to be something different. That will supply a certain number of housing units. We've already talked about the buildable lands inventory and the housing needs inventory. That is going to be work that's starting, has to be completed by June of this coming year. Following that, we are going to have a new project that is going to be started. And that is being funded by the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study, SCATS, lovingly referred to as SCATS. We have a transportation impacts from growth, specific design study, as to just exactly what it's going to be to affect River Road and our intersections, the operation standards of the intersection at the freeway. So there is a specific study that is then going to be following up on these studies to say, "Okay, this much growth will translate into this many cars on this road, and that means the functionality of these intersections are going to be X." So, we are working very hard to try and, and meet all of the issues that you have heard talked about tonight. The revitalization project is in full swing now. And we expect after, basically after the holidays, that we will be convening additional work sessions, open houses, various opportunities for the public to come in and start expressing their concerns and questions and desires. So, thank you all for participating in this project tonight. I don't know how much more Glenn has, but I don't think I need to be up anymore.
That was my last slide.
So, those of you who have agreed to work with us on the BLI and the HNA, by all means, you'll be hearing more from us. Obviously, that will then go to the council. That is an action item that will be before the city council, and there will be hearings on that. So, there's a lot happening, so stay tuned and be involved. Thank you for being involved tonight.
Thanks for the questions.
You tell us.